Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the City of East Providence City Council Workshop Budget Meeting this evening. Just remind all of you that this is a workshop budget meeting only, so there'll be no public comment. In addition to that, we'll be discussing and only discussing this evening. If I'm not mistaken, and correct me if I'm wrong, no, I am right, the Police Department Fiscal Year Year-to-Date Budget Performance. So if we can all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Aye. To the Pledge of Allegiance, sir and flag of the United States of America, to the Republic, which stands one nation under God, in the name of our government, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. So again, this evening's workshop is on the Police Department's Fiscal Year Year-to-Date Budget Performance. And as opposed to, I don't think, and correct me if I'm wrong, if anybody here, I don't think we need to go through line item by line item. The way I look at it is those that raise a red flag, the deficit portion of it, we can have a nice discussion as to why we're over that budget amount. And just to get the ball rolling and have some discussion, one of the first things that came to my attention at looking at this budget is I see a couple of things in overtime, and I noticed that, and I'm gonna just pick this out for one, and then we can spin off from there. There it is. So, and the question that I had was, I noticed that we're in excess of almost $400,000 over budget for the detail pay. And I can only imagine, and Malcolm, if you want to clarify this, I can only imagine, or the chief could, that on the flip side of this here, that we're also recouping money from that detail work that's being performed, from contractors, site work that's being done in the city, and throughout the city as well.
All right, so we'll address the first part first, the overtime. So if you look at the first line item, regular salaries, you see that we're under budget by $775,000. So now if you go to the overtime line, a few lines down, we're over budget by $214,000. So essentially, we're still ahead, half million dollars. Those two lines are always going to counteract each other. So if you want the regular salary line item to come down, we don't hire people, but that will make the overtime line item go up. So they're inverse with each other. So if we want to, say, reduce the overtime budget, we do exactly what we're doing now. We have a recruitment process, we hire new bodies. Of course, that comes with a cost of salaries and benefits and everything else, but there's always that magic medium where they're both equal. So essentially, what it's gonna come down to is that cost is, for rounding purposes, it's gonna cost you $10 million in personnel costs for the police department. It's just a matter of what category you want to put it in, whether it's regular salaries or overtime.
So are you saying you're gonna be over $2 million?
Over? Over budget?
Over budget.
No, I'm just saying, so like you said, right now, we're still under budget by $500,000 from the salary line where we're over 775, to the other line where we're over 214. Sorry, where we're under 775, and then over 214.
Okay, but I'm looking at your budget for regular salaries as 8 million.
Okay.
And you're saying you're gonna be at approximately 10 million?
No, no, no. I mean, if you added what we have in the budget, the 8 million for regular salaries, and if you add that into the 1.6 million, so roughly 9.6 million, that's what it's gonna cost. So those categories are inverse to each other.
Okay.
So it's roughly gonna cost 10 million either way, it's just a matter of what line item you want to put it in. But when you have minimum manning and things like that, where you have contractual obligations to fill the road, we have no choice.
Understandable.
And then where it comes discretionary is, there's some personnel that can have some movement, that could maybe save some overtime, so we have very limited discretionary overtime.
Okay. So getting back to my original question regarding the detail pay, I see that's almost, well, it is 384,000. On the flip side, there's revenues, I take that, go against that. How much is that revenue?
Yes, so...
That's generated for that? Is it equal to, or above?
It's in excess. I predict this year, we will be in excess of $600,000 over between what we take in and what we pay out. And taken in, I mean, the administrative fee that we charge, and also the hourly rate we charge for having the cruisers on the detail. So every car you see that's out there on a detail, it's making $25 an hour.
Right.
So there will be a difference. It's weird, we talked to Malcolm already about including some of the revenue in this budget, so that's easier to see. So it just, it doesn't look right where we have to budget. Last year, we budgeted $900,000 for detail pay. It doesn't look right that it comes out of our budget, when in fact, we're actually getting compensated for that, above and beyond, sometimes even double that. So we've spoken to him about that, and we'll try to make it clear.
All right. Hoping that this could just spin off and make some conversation this evening.
Yep, I just wanna follow up on that. So all details, chief, are paid by outside vendors, or whoever needs that detail?
I'd say 90% of them, except for city details.
Except for city projects.
Football games, and things like that, or Department, whatever it may be. Some city departments have details at times.
So it's generally never a deficit item, total?
No, I mean, that's the goal, is to never have it, you know, even be even for that matter.
How about actual openings in the department for FTEs? I'm not talking about any new, or proposed jobs, or are there? I assume we're recruiting, so there must be some, and that's why you have overtime.
We could use 20 police officers. We budgeted for 103, and we're at about 83.
How long have you been about at that status?
I mean, it's been a state, so for instance, State Police graduates tomorrow, we have two guys that were with our department that wanted to go to the State Police. Last week, we had one of our guys graduate from the DEA Academy. So they're going on for better opportunities, more money, bigger dreams. It's not like, you know, people are, it's not a revolving door, don't get me wrong. We've had one person go to another municipal department. She had her personal reasons for it, and we agree as to why she went there. Her father was the chief there for many years, so it was kind of expected. People, I don't generally see, I can't even name one that has left the City of East Providence to go to another municipality.
And last question on that, let's say 20 that we hire, that's budgeted for?
Well, it was, as you can see, and that's why we're under, because we didn't hire them, but we can't put all 20 in the academy. We're not gonna be able to train them. In this loss of personnel, we've also lost field training officers, so we're sending at least a half a dozen to field training school. We do have training officers, but probably six is the most comfortable amount that we can train. So we'll put six through the academy in January, and we have three laterals that are scheduled to come on within the next few months. But at the very least, we'll have a list established from this recruiting process, and then we'll be able to put another half dozen, maybe up to eight, into the July academy.
Mm-hmm.
Thanks. Chief, if I may, to the President. When you reference the regular salaries versus the overtime, it's my understanding that you would prefer to be fully staffed rather than pay overtime, right? I mean, that's a much more efficient way to operate, is it not?
Well, it's not only efficient, it's safer. So right now, the officer you encounter may be here on his 14th or 15th hour, it might be 4:00 PM to you, but he may have been working since midnight. So sometimes, you know, I don't wanna say we've had any problems or complaints, but there's a little bit more leeway you have to offer the officer who's on his fourth day of 16 hours in a row. So in order for freshness and staffing levels, yes, we wanna be at full staff. We're not an optimal overtime department, like, that's not our goal, is to make overtime for everybody. Our goal is to have different divisions, happy personnel, you know, we wanna be able to say, we can have 15 detectives. We can afford to have it, because we can afford to lose people from the road. We wanna have like a community policing type of division, where they can go out and hand out stickers to the kids at the farmer's market. You know, we wanna have things where people don't come in and just work the same post, day after day, day after day, for 25 years.
So then it's fair to say that a top priority of yours would be getting too fully staffed, or close enough to fully staffed, that you didn't have to have those concerns?
Absolutely.
So as we sit here, and we start to go through the budgets of the different departments, and try to figure out where best we should rack and stack for the overall good of the city, if we were to say to you, okay, we can free up a million dollars, right? What are the three things that you might want us to focus on, or things that you might want that money for, to put the department in a better position?
Well, I'll address that question without thinking about asset forfeiture, because my first thing to you would be, there are other places in the city that need it, we have still some asset forfeiture left. Out of the 60 million, if we weren't to have contributed the 50 to the pension, we'd still have 58. So we're not wasteful with our money. We could have easily gone out and just bought everything under the sun, but we're very frugal. We're supposed to spend that money within three years, the government's getting kind of annoyed. And I talked to the person in charge in Washington DC, and I told him, I said, "I would rather keep this and have it last forever, than I would rather have it be spent on BMW police cars." You know, there are things that, it just, it doesn't make sense. We've got new equipment, we've outfitted the SWAT team, we bought a $300,000 armored vehicle that we never would have been able to buy with taxpayer money. And now, if we never use it for 15, 20 years, that's a good thing for the city, it means it was never necessary. But on that one occasion where we might need it, that can drive through the wall of the high school and help people in seconds.
And I've always said that, chief, that although we don't use it, or need it, at this point in time, in the world we live in today, you never know. And at least, we'll be prepared.
I agree.
And I'd rather be prepared than unprepared in event that something happens. So, you know, I voted to have that vehicle, and I'm glad we do have it.
I'm gonna ask, chief, given what I've spent my last three years on, that you do not drive that vehicle through the wall of the high school.
Or maybe the old school.
I'm just gonna ask, which one, the old one, new?
I have driven it, and it's awful. But you know, let's go back to your question. If you were to say you have another million dollars, you can't return it to the city, you have to spend it, I would put it on shift differentials for the guys that work 4:00 to 12:00, away from their families. I would put it for an extra shift differential for the guys that work midnights. I would put it for the guys that are working Christmas, although we get paid holidays, they may be working that day, they deserve a little extra for being away on Christmas and New Years. I mean, so, I mean, I would spread that to the hard-working men and women that are doing things, when everybody else is expecting them to be off like them, but they're not. Missing birthday parties at home, graduations, you name it, everything under the sun, it always happens at the wrong time.
Can, excuse me, councilman, can asset forfeiture money be used for staffing?
It can't. It can be, so, let me explain a little bit about that. It can't supplant your budget. So for instance, in the future, I'll reveal my secret, I'm gonna ask you for five new patrol cars. We haven't bought patrol cars from the city enough. So basically, if we budgeted for six patrol cars every single year for the last 10, 20 years, we can't suddenly not buy patrol cars, and then use asset forfeiture money for it, because it's supplanting your budget. So it's gotta, this money is used for law enforcement reasons, it's supposed to be for enforcement and investigation, and basically, things that you would not be able to afford, exactly like that truck. It's supposed, and I don't wanna say toys, but it's just stuff that you never would have been able to have with taxpayer money. These are the extras. It's for advanced training, it's for advanced software, for many number of things, and it is a useful tool to have.
So it could not go to add, say, school resource officers at our elementary schools?
There are guidelines. So for instance, when we had our lateral transfers a few years ago, we purchased all their uniforms and all their equipment with asset forfeiture money. So there are ways that it can pay, and it's just a matter of getting it approved from Washington. As a matter of fact, I don't have copies, but if you wanna pass it around, it's a sample letter of what I have to write to Washington, and then they either approve or deny our request, and release the money back to us.
So is that money, do we pay and we get reimbursed, or is it paid right directly from the asset forfeiture?
No, I send a request, like the letter you're about to see, like for instance, for the Bearcat, I had to write a letter. First of all, I had to justify its means and existence to our city, and then I had to send it to Washington. They said yes, so we went ahead and purchased it. Washington had sent the money, Malcolm sat on the money until it was time to pay for the vehicle, so then we had the money in hand, and we paid for it.
Okay.
But as of now, they have the bulk of the money.
Can I ask the other half of my question? So let's go the other way, right? And we have to give you bad news, and make a cut. You know, can you tell us a little bit about what that would, say, a cut of a million dollars, right? Just around, I'm just throwing a number out there, I'm not contemplating that at all.
First of all, if we go line by line, this is why our budget is so good. First of all, if you wanna spring the good news on everybody, it's projected to be $100,000 under budget as it is, just from cutting costs, not even including the half million we're expecting in revenue generation from details. But if we go line by line, it's all tied to the contractual stuff, there's nothing in here that's gifts. So let's say we go to training. You know, we have required training that we have to attend, and we have to go to, we have to qualify with our weapons. If we start cutting on training, we get called out when we go to court, we lose cases, and it's not good for the city to have a police department that's not well-trained. So if you, you know, regular salaries, that's based on personnel, holiday pay, based on personnel, part-time and temporary pay, this is a mistake in the budget, as you can see, we're over budget. And because I saw that we were over budget, and we don't have any part-time employees, I investigated, and Malcolm discovered that this is actually someone from the engineering department, and shouldn't have been taken out of our budget, so that will be rectified, that's not an overage. Court pay, we kind of base it on prior years of what we've paid, you know, so now we could have had a couple of different trials, we could have had a couple of different tragedies in the city that caused us to go to court more, you know, that could be an anomaly here and there, but by cutting that, you're gonna be caught red-handed someday if you have to pay it. The crossing guards, that is what it is, there's a certain number of crossing guards for every school, so we know that number, that's not gonna change.
So that brings up an interesting point, and not to interrupt you, chief, but I had that on my radar here, as to crossing guards. We know the school year, what days they're gonna be working, Monday through Fridays, we know the hours in the morning, it's a split shift, 2:00 in the morning, 2:00 in the afternoon. How and why would that be over?
Because what happened was, last year, we didn't have staffing, so what we would do is, police officers would cover the crossing. This year, we added a few more, and whoever did the number from last year probably just transferred the number, thinking this hasn't changed.
So it's at a different rate?
Well, the cops are getting paid on the road, the cops are just getting paid, they weren't getting paid extra to do the school crossing. That was like a call for service for them.
Thank you.
So VIN checks, we pay the officers time and a half, because that's a city detail, so they get time and a half for spending, you know, 11:00 AM to 3:00 PM checking people's VIN numbers. We've contemplated leaving the fee at $15 for city residents, but raising the fee to $20 for non-city residents, in conjunction with the fees that are being charged by other municipalities for the service. Acting pay, that's if somebody leaves for a significant amount of time, and we have to fill positions up. For instance, if we have a lieutenant with a long-term illness, we'll make an acting lieutenant, which will then in turn make an acting sergeant, sometimes an acting detective. So we can't really foresee what kind of acts will cause us to lose anyone of rank that will have to be filled, so that's a little bit arbitrary. Stipend, is no longer in existence, that was in regards to our former city manager. Overtime, we've discussed. Severance, same thing, it depends on who we're gonna, who's gonna retire. That's a prediction of who's leaving, what kind of sick time we have to pay out, vacation time we have to compensate them for. So this year, we had retirements that we didn't expect, so it was over, way over the budget that we had anticipated. Health insurance is a constant that we know, life insurance, dental, health co-share, clothing, it's contractual, so we know what that's gonna be. Pension, we know what that's gonna be. And there's another thing to address in our police budget, now that I see the MURS pension. The MURS pension you see is for the steelworkers that we employ, and the dispatch center of the 14 dispatchers all comes out of the police budget, although it's police and fire dispatch. Local pension, that's the city's required contribution, the ARC. FICA Medicare, that's a constant. Tuition and education, if you don't know, it's state law to reimburse police officers for their continuing education, so we try to gauge how many people are going to school, make sure that that number is accurate. Purchased professional services, like counseling services and things like that, that we have needed at our disposal in times of peer support types of issues, when we have mental health counselors come in. Postage, self-explanatory food, you know, for the prisoners, we buy granola bars, and they have cups for water in their cell. Repairs, same thing, it's hard to determine what repairs are. Water, telephone, telephone, as a matter of fact, it looks like we're gonna be over budget, but that in fact is going to be $25,000 under budget, because a few months ago, when we cut that copper line that the fire department was using, as I said, we pay for all the expenses in dispatch, that copper line will save us $4,000 a month.
What copper line was this?
It's for their radio communications. So for the next couple of months, it's gonna be substantial savings. Lease equipment, travel and training, like I said, a lot of times, we'll pay it through asset forfeiture, because this looks like an overage. What happens with asset forfeiture, if the hotel offering the training is not offering the government rate that the federal government requires, even if it's a $1 difference, you can't pay partial with the federal government. It's either, you know, if their limit is $100, and this hotel is charging 101, you can't use federal funds. So we ran into that more than we expected last year with that category. Police travel, where do we leave off? General office expense, that's usually a constant. Police supplies, we usually know what we need, whether it's ammunition, office equipment, uniforms, same thing. Heating and gas oil fluctuates with pricing. Hopefully, that will be changed with our HVAC, as, right now, Ed Catelli is designing something with National Grid for an energy-saving system in our building. My office, I'd sit in the middle of winter with my window open all winter, and I'd be sweating, and the office adjacent to me, they had granola bars melt off the shelf at one point, and then if you walk further down the hall in dispatch, they were in blankets and sweatshirts. So it's a weird building with some different remodeling over the years. So this company, and I found, the major actually, found some paperwork from 2001, maybe four or five consecutive years of us asking for HVAC system repairs.
Now, what asset forfeiture fund that, they would?
Yes.
Okay.
Gas, same thing with the cruisers, you know, depends on how many miles are driven, you know, what the guys are running for gas, and how much gas prices are. Electricity's a constant. Cleaning and supplies is usually a constant. Repairs with vehicles fluctuate, you know, as you said, you know, these detail cars are out there sometimes 24 hours a day, running constantly, because if you turn them off, the lights will die. So some of these cars are running, and running, and running, and that's what's helpful when we have a surplus. So this surplus in charging for the detail cars started on the chief Winkquist, and basically, what it was designed to do is so the city never had to pay for a police vehicle. That was always returned originally to the police department, and that's what we used to buy frontline cars. So all the cars that you see on posts, the ones numbered 1 through 9, we would get brand-new cars for them, to keep them in the best running shape. You know, if they're in chases, or whatever it may be, you want them to have the cars that are still tightly turning and operating efficiently. We will take those cars, and we disperse them to, say, the school resource officers, and then we'll take the highest mileage of the cars and just put them into the detail fleet, and take the highest mileage detail cars and retire them, either at auction, or you can still see a few of them driving around, I think Jim Bellamy has one for the fire department, some people at the city have some of the old Crown Vics. So the cars filtered down, eventually brought to other departments, or sold at auction.
Chief, I have a couple of questions. So with the detail cars, it's $25 an hour per car, where does that money go to?
So now, it goes to the general fund, I'm sorry, I guess I lost my train of thought. So what it used to be used for is, let's say we had 200,000 left from the cars. It's essentially the outside vendors were buying the cars that were using on these details. So the cost was transferred, but then, a number of years later, it was just, it was thrown into the general fund, and they basically said, "If you need cars, let us know," and then put it in the budget.
My question would be, so why can't that money go into, you know, an account where it's used to repair cruisers and buy cruisers as needed?
It can, but in cases like this, this will help your school deficit, and some of the funding that the city needs in other places.
And the administration fee for each detail, what's that percentage, you know?
It's not, it's just a straight $50 fee.
Well, most communities, they do charge up to 20%.
A lot of communities charge a lot more for their details.
Would that be, what is the detail rate?
We charge 50, but some guys make as much as 57. So where we help out, where the overage comes is when the traffic control people and retired officers are working, who make less.
Would a percentage help out with the administration fee? Because that's just, that's just something that's factored into, you know, road jobs and whatnot.
Yeah, I mean, of course it would, because I saw one detail bill go out today that was for $18,000.
So, and that could be, it can be anywhere from 5%, 20%, you can set the...
I don't know, do you know what the other communities are using?
I know one community that I work in is 20%.
Okay.
Some are, and that's at the high end, you know, and I'm not saying to charge that, but something definitely worth looking at.
Councilman Marano, could you explain that a little bit? I just, I'm not following.
So, details are processed, we have, one of our clerks, I don't know if it's the same with EP, but one of our clerks takes a detail, a request slips in, billing, anything like that, there's an administration fee attached to it. So, the town of Bristol does make out, you know, and that's factored into road construction. So when there's a road construction that comes into town, say they're gonna pave a certain section of road, they factor the detail cruiser, the detail officer, and the administration fee. So maybe that's something worth looking into, if it's consuming a lot of time with someone at the PD, that's maybe something worth looking at.
So far to date, we've taken in 15, well, actually, about $130,000 in administrative fees.
And that goes into the general fund also?
Yes. So, you know, for the both totals, and one of them, they're separate into two, two different categories here, so roughly, we've roughly taken in a million dollars in reimbursement for details, where we've paid our officers 520,000. So about 500,000 ahead this year, if you wanna take a look at this. Basically, it's just the first two columns to focus on, this is what, the totals we paid out, and the totals we've taken in on the left.
That paying of officers, that comes out of the detail, unless it's a department or city detail, correct?
I missed the first part.
So that paying of these officers, that money that's being, that's indicated here as, you know, detail pay, but is that broken down into the companies that pay the officer? That's hiring the officer? I mean...
I don't know how the spreadsheet is set up, I mean, if you need the details, I could probably get it from you, from the payroll card.
I mean, some details, obviously, they're gonna be city details, and that's to come out of the overtime budget, whatnot, but, oh, I just have a couple more questions. So, actually, this would be from Malcolm, and this is one of the things that I've mentioned before, is it possible, and would it be helpful, I know it would be for me, to have revenues on the same sheet of paper? Like, what we're doing, what we're doing right now, we're looking at, you know, the police department. And one of the things that stood out for all of us, I know me, Nate, was the detail rate, detail pay, how that 384, but as the chief explained, you know, that's not exactly what that means. Is it possible, and should we not have revenues on the same sheet moving forward for the departments that we're looking at, in fairness to us?
I don't know from an economic, excuse me, from an accounting point of view, how difficult or easy it is to do that, but Malcolm, you can show us.
Yeah, if I'm gonna put in a spreadsheet like I did on the projections, I could put that at the top. When we met yesterday to go over this, that was one of the questions that they brought up, it says, "Well, we have the revenue." I go, "Well, I've gotta send it out right now." He said, "So go ahead, send it out, but going forward, we probably ought to put the revenue on there." Now, when I get the revenue, it's pretty much a lump number. So if you wanted to know how much was details versus VINs, we'd have to go back to the department for that. But, and that's why I left briefly, as I said, you know, go pull the numbers up pretty quick on the police revenue. And to give you a quick update, through May of this year, the police revenue, which is detailed VIN, everything, is just about a million dollars. Last year at this time, it was 650,000. And last year, the police brought in 1.65 million. So we're looking at probably 2-plus million this year. And that would be helpful on your side, and they were right, it's just, I didn't have time to get it on there.
Okay. But you think that's something that, if we, say we look at another department coming up in one of these special meetings, is that, is that something that could be possible? For me, it helps me out.
Yes, and obviously, the main one would be the fire department with the rescue.
Correct. And that's gonna be a question also, with the rescue charges that they generate when they do rescue runs. That's gonna be a question that I'm gonna ask when that segment comes up. But for me, when I look at something like this, a couple of questions right off the bat, it's, how are we looking for the, you know, following year? Are we gonna be in the red? You already answered that question, it looks like we're gonna be 100,000 in surplus. And then of course, we look at each item and see how we can improve it. And I just have one more question for the chief, and that has to do with the accreditation, and is, as Councilman Kahoon mentioned, if there was anything that you needed, if you were to get, you know, if you say you had an, an extra million, or we gave you a million, using that analogy, is there anything you need as far as that goes?
Yes, um, you know, so there are some costs involved, and I think one of those costs is a command center, you just have to have a command center for accreditation, we'd have to outfit one of our existing vehicles for that, or buy a new one, but I think we have a vehicle that we could convert. Uh, some of it also includes fencing, where we'd have to finish the gates at the front of the building to, to, um, prevent people from passing through the, the back lot, uh, those are just some of the costs. Oh, um, the fire department has required to do a walkthrough of the building, and because of our HVAC system, we had some fire doors that were open in order to try to help some of that, that airflow that I mentioned earlier, so we would have to close the fire doors, but at this point, until the HVAC system is not like that, so, um, that's, although that's a cost that we're, we're covering, that is a cost that is involved in accreditation as well.
Well, yeah, there's, uh, there's definitely a cost associated to meet the standards.
There is a cost, but I don't know if it's been explained to you, that, um, our deductible is going up in July.
Yes.
So every single incident involving a police officer that would require insurance to cover us would be a $2,500 deductible now, but a $75,000 deductible come July 1st.
Correct, and that's why I brought this up, and the, uh, try and make, bring the point that it's urgent to have our accreditation up.
It is urgent, we're working on it, we've kind of capped it at three to four policies a week, because not only do the officers have to read the policy, they have to show that they're enforcing the policy and utilizing the policy. If it's something where we came up with a new form in order to track something for accreditation, we have to show that the officers are actually using this form and filling it out. You know, three to four policies a week for the last, probably, month now, is, is a lot, but we don't want to over-indate them either, where they're just seeing a policy, not really looking at it, because they've had too many, and they're not following them.
Okay, thank you, chief.
Mr. President, could I just go back quickly to the details? Can you give us an example of, just pick one off the top of your head, if you can, of, of a vendor, or who would be someone that would be paying for a detail?
Rhode Island DOT, National Grid, Verizon, contractors, Cox.
Okay, what, what I was, okay, that's good, I was hoping that, you know, we hear from a lot of local businesses and, and residents that, you know, permits and fees and other taxes, so I didn't want to see where we might get into charging local businesses that are maybe building a house or something and have to put up a, pay for a detail at that area, um, I didn't want to heap up on them and increase fee if you're satisfied with the detail income we're getting.
The last detail I remember requiring a personal owner for was, um, when they destructed Bovies because of the hazardous area and location, um, but that's the only one I can remember offhand, I could be wrong, but I can check into it if you, if you need to know.
No, that's fine, so, we can charge the state, we don't mind, Rhode Island Department Transportation.
Help, they're not watching.
Well, but to that point, um, and by, I'm sorry, will you?
No, but, but I was going to just...
To, to Mr. Morano's point, I'd be very interested in following that up, right? Because I want to know where we stand with regard to other communities, um, the market, if you will, because if, you know, perhaps if we're a little bit, um, higher priced, maybe that might be a factor when somebody decides, "Oh, we're going to dig up the road, and then we're going to come back in three more days and dig up the..." I mean, there seem to be a lot of our roads dug up a lot of the time. If they had to factor that in, maybe they'd say, "Let's do it once and make sure we get it right back."
So, to answer, uh, Councilman Morano's question, I'm not an expert on the, that fee, administrative fee, and I don't know if that just applies to those, um, big-ticket, uh, you know, work that's being done in that, that community, but I know that any resident, and we do have quite a bit of those in, in Bristol, any resident, any, uh, like, you know, church festival, it's whatever the fee is on that detail request slip, so, and it's contractual, it goes up, it's a time and a half, or whatever the first-class patrolmen's pay, blah, 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 but it's, that's what they pay, there's no additional percentages added to that dollar amount. There is a minimum, it's a four-hour minimum, so if they hire someone for two hours, they're going to pay four hours, and I think it's pretty much like that with every community. But as far as the administration fees, I, I, we can look into a little bit further, but I know that they charge those for those big-ticket items, uh, and, you know, Medicare is being repaved and so on and so forth, so.
You think it's less in East Province? You think it's less here than in other places?
Well, the chief just said that, it's a straight $50 fee for that, correct?
Correct.
Here, yeah, okay.
And that's a line item in a contractor's bid, if I'm not mistaken, so when a contractor bids, there's a police detail in that line item.
That's a new, that's a new charge also that we've charged, so. Uh, what I want to caution is, um, you know, pricing yourself out of the market, you don't want to make your fees and your hourly wage is too high, and then the company decides to go with a private company or, or, um, flaggers, and then you don't see the discrepancy in the, in the pay.
So we've dealt with that also, and I don't know how it is here, but, um, it's the, it could be the city's policy that a police officer is required, especially in those critical, you know, main areas, if, if it poses a traffic pedestrian and so what, safety hazard. We've had, we've had the same conversations, and ours is quite a bit higher than yours, especially for detail pay, I don't want to say what that is here, probably got myself in trouble, but, it's a lot higher for weekends and holidays and any time after four o'clock, so. And, we just, we have quite a bit, I think we have an unusual, unusual amount of details compared to most communities for some reason, it's like that every year.
We do, we have a lot of roadwork going on at once, not to mention the fees, festivals, contracts.
Just something, just an idea, just something to look at, look into, I mean, other communities, other communities do it, and it varies, and it varies in percentages, so, just an idea.
If I may, I just want to go back to what you had mentioned earlier about the, um, not exactly sure what line item it was, but you talked about the steelworkers and dispatch.
Uh, that was the MERS pension line, which reminded me of it, that's their state pension system.
So you said, uh, the dispatchers, that the police department, uh, carries that for both police and fire?
Yes.
And that's not divided amongst both your budgets?
No.
And?
And when they have to go to training, like, for instance, when the fire department switches over to new radios, it's historically been us that pays for the dispatchers to go to their training for the fire, fire training.
Okay. Is there a reason why?
Maybe because there are houses in our building, and that's just always the way it's been.
Okay, thank you.
Pass that back. So is it fair to say, chief, that the takeaway for us as a council, maybe I'm just asking for me, is leave it alone, leave the budget alone, you know, as we come into the next year, um, you know, what you guys are looking at is what you need, don't cut it, it's not a place where we're hurting, um, that's what I'm hearing, so if you want to correct any of that misconception for me, please do.
Well, I, I would hate to say it and say you'd have to raise it 2% because we have a salary increase contractual, uh, something in November, so, in order to accommodate that, but, you know, as you can see, you know, we're not over in many places, so the budget has been pretty, pretty correct all year long, and that's pretty much what a city wants, I, I, I think a city does not want to have someone that's a million dollars over, when someone last year, like, the schools might have been begging for a million dollars, and of course, they don't want to see someone a million dollars under.
Well, correct me if I'm wrong, also, a lot of that has to do with salaries because you don't have the personnel.
Right, but, but if we increase our salary budget, we're going to reduce our overtime budget, so, like I said, those two go hand in hand, so we'll always consider the, the 10 million roughly part of what it costs for personnel alone, no other costs involved, just personnel salaries.
Okay. Any other further questions?
Anything we can do from an ordinance standpoint, or, you know, if, to, to help, uh, you know, to help you guys out, to help you more efficient, safer, to help you get the numbers up to where you need them to be from a staffing perspective?
Well, I mean, this all started a decade ago with layoffs, like I've explained to a couple of you privately, you know, it's easy to come in and lay off 10 police officers, at the time it was 13, they allowed, uh, 13 other people to retire early, and they kept the 13 new people, the ones that didn't flee to other departments anyway. So what I've explained earlier, when it comes time to recruiting a police officer, it takes roughly a year, it's easy just to say a year, because we just had a, a month and a half recruitment drive, after this, you know, through the selection process, uh, they have a number of things to do before we get to January's academy, psychological tests, doctor's tests, background checks, there's a lot of things to do to make sure that, that quality of the person that you're hiring is someone that you want to wear this uniform. Uh, once they get to the academy, it's a 22-week academy, once they graduate successfully, they come out and it's a 13-week field training program. Unfortunately, last year, we had three out of four fail our last FTO program, um, so roughly it is one year for when you lose somebody, so we've been trying to catch up from that layoff period from a decade ago still, because in, in the meantime, you have some unexpected deaths, unexpected retirements, um, transfers, moves, I mean, there's just things that we couldn't account for and we could never keep up, and I remember, we're replacing them six at a time every six months, too, so it's just hard to keep up.
So with that being said, do you, do you hire eight to keep six, knowing that you're going to lose a couple or even perhaps more?
Ideally, yes, it's just a matter of how many we can train at one time with our field training program, and as of now, out of the 83 people we have left, I think the number is 22 that can go at any moment, that have already completed their years of service. And then if you factor in a couple of the lateral transfers that we've taken along the years, with the maximum age of 62 and forced retirement, we could lose a couple or more that are on that 25-year list, 20 or 25-year list.
So that's a good question, um, are we a senior force, would you say, mostly, or?
I wouldn't call it senior, I'd call it experienced, but.
Seasoned.
I said seasoned.
Looks like gentlemen, we knew.
I mean, 25%.
Wow.
So we have a, uh, big need safety-wise and?
Well, not to mention no one wants a job anymore, it's, there are departments out west and, uh, and south that are given $20,000 incentive fees to become police officers, nobody wants the job anymore. I mean, it, the public perception of the job is awful, people treat you poorly, for the most part, um, this, this recruitment, we mentioned as of, as of this morning, we had 155 applicants, back in the early 90s when I applied, there was a competition with about 1,200 people in a high school auditorium for one person, I wasn't that one, they took five of us, um, but five out of 1,200, you get a different class of person than you're going to get, you know, 20 out of 150. Take it easy. 92.
You mean you applied and East Province didn't hire you, Councilman?
I applied in East Province in 91.
Boy, we, we were lucky there.
Chief is 100% correct, back in the day, the, for every one opening, you would expect at least 500 applicants, that's how it was back then, it was very competitive, not anymore, but.
So I would say, uh, chief, that it's fair to say at this point in time, one of the things, I guess your administration, you and the administration have to really focus in on is the accreditation, uh, process, uh, making sure that, uh, you know, the command center, defense, um, the, the fire doors, all the things.
Unless there's a study that the city wants to do, self-insure, I mean, that's the other option, is, is self-insurance, which is dangerous.
Chief, that command center, you know, first of all, we're going for a state of credit, right?
Yes.
Is, that's a natural standard?
I've heard, I have not seen it in writing, that's what we're going through now, but that was one of the things that, um, Warwick told us.
Oh. Well, we can have a conver, uh, I guess we can have a conversation later, either, so.
I'll look for that requirement.
I don't think it is, to be honest with you, I'm a natural, I'm a state, I'm a state assessor for the accreditation process, and I've never seen that as a standard, the only thing that could be, that could be related to that is secondary form of communications, where if the dispatch center came out, you know, was to, something was to happen to it, you have a secondary form of backup, and typically, they are, like a mobile command center or something like that, if maybe that's the case.
That's probably what it is.
Well, if there's another way to get around that, maybe there is, that's talking to the PAC, maybe they can help out, and Warwick is a good resource for that also. But, uh, if you ever need any help with that kind of stuff, you can just reach out to the Rhode Island PAC, as you know, they can help you out with that. There's other things, too, that's probably, that you're going to run into, it's the, uh, the generator, that kind of stuff, if the department doesn't have one, definitely going to need one.
We do.
Those are big item numbers, uh, and if you need help with that stuff, I can help you out with that.
Sure, thanks for the assistance.
Councilman Morano.
Uh, just to close from my point of view, uh, thank you, chief, uh, great report, and, um, Director, and Malcolm, uh, on a lighter note, my last question, uh, chief, you and the deputy are both looking very fit these days, is it because of the live PD cameras in town, is there any truth to that?
Can you clarify these days first? And can I see your lapel, because the last time I didn't like the looks of it.
Yes, I recall, but I noticed you haven't been on camera yet, we've been watching.
Well, uh, unfortunately, I went to the farmer's market today, and I was ambushed, and you will see me on camera.
Okay.
Soon.
Well, I, I could tell you, uh, Major Franciscone, I see him walk in the neighborhood, so, uh, I think he was preparing himself for that.
My, my lapel comment was the mayor had given me a tucket PD pin to wear to some event, it was here, the chief wasn't happy with that.
I'm glad it's removed.
It's off.
I, I would just ask you that going forward, please don't be shy, I mean, I don't get the impression that you are, anyway, but if there is a need, if there's something that we can do to support the police department, um, please, you know, bubble that up ASAP, because we don't want to let, you know, we don't want to make you guys go through, um, you know, suffer, right, if, needlessly, let's, let's make sure you got what you need.
We appreciate your support.
I second that thought. I have no further questions, uh, if anybody else does, please do, uh, otherwise, thank you, chief, thank you, major. Malcolm, Mr. Moore, if you want to come up and say something in closing?
Yes, um, as far as the police department, the last three years, I went back and looked, uh, they showed a surplus each of the last three years, um, not a big surplus, but still it's a surplus, and, uh, their budget's over 16 million, 1% would be 160,000, a half a percent would be 80,000, so the last three years, they've been, you know, under 1%, 80, 84,000, they're projecting 90 this year, 84 the previous year, 140, I think, the year before that. So, so they've done very good managing their budget, and when we talk about the budget, it's more of a bottom line, they've got 16.7 million this year to spend, so if they're saving in one line, we let them spend in another, so you'll, you'll see some of that fluctuation, we're like, okay, but, you know, the key number is the 16.7, and they've done very good on that. And, um, and I just wanted to talk to, uh, Councilman Kahoon quickly, or respond when he said, "Trying to cut a million." If you look at, where I did the projections, the, the last five digits of the object, if it starts with 5,100, its salary, if it's 5,200, its benefits, that's pretty much all contractual, if you add that up, that's about 95% of their budget, so anything else that's discretionary comes to 800,000.
Okay.
So, you know, you're...
Yeah, I, I use million, I, I work for the feds, Malcolm, right, and millions is like shake and fry, so that's right.
Okay. You know, my concern is, it's, uh, so we're going to have the building of the new high school, that's going to be obviously an additional tax on the residents, okay? We have the potential for, uh, a sewer increase, depending on what the consultant, you know, tells us, so, right there, there's already two increases, and we also had a home reevaluation, which, that will go up also. When I'm looking at something like this, I look at it as, you know, so the chief said, and that's inevitable, that's going to happen contractually, there's a 2% rate, uh, pay raise. My thing, my goal would be, can the department and all the other departments, at least for this year, until we figure out how much residents will be paying, uh, for the school and the potential sewer and those other things that are unforeseen, is there any way to look at this budget and say, "Okay, we can, you know, work with this here or there in this area to, so that we don't ask for more increase, or a, an increase for the following year." I know there are 100,000 under, it looks like it's going to be in surplus, however, 100,000 is really not a lot when you consider all the, you know, the 2% for salaries and such, so, that's, that's how I look at it.
Can, can that be figured out at this point in time, not knowing what the, um, reimbursement rate is?
What the school will cost us?
Well, not so much a school, I mean, reflecting on the increase.
Well, when we did this, uh, when, uh, Paul Luba had put the projections together, and he was saying, just for the contractual increases between the city and school, assuming no other money from the state for the school, and level funded, we keep hearing that, if it was level funded, he said it was going to be a 3% increase for the next few years, and we'd have to tack on one more percent for the next few years for the school bond, because we had talked about giving an extra 1% for the next four years, because the bond's going to cost $6 million a year. And, you know, so you, we were looking at 4% for the next...
See, and then that's what, that what, that's what scares me, right, that's a lot, you know, uh, as we know, a big percentage of our population is senior citizens, and already they're on fixed incomes, and we, and I mean, if it has to happen, it has to happen, right, but we have to really do our job into looking at these budgets, and I'm not saying to beat up on different departments, but how can we have everyone help in, okay, we can cut down on this area here, or we can cut back in this, in this area here, and so on and so forth, because that is going to be a lot of increases, at least for this one year coming up, let's see, let's see if the dust settles as to what we need. I'm, I'm probably talking very simplistic, you know, to me, it makes sense in my head, but, I don't know.
We have to be really, you know, we got to be really tight and diligent with the departments, as far as increases are concerned, I mean, it's a whole nother discussion to have as far as that's concerned, so, you know, you're right, I, I can't agree with you anymore, and that's factoring in new taxes, right?
Well, if I could add one more thing, um, you know, the capital improvement requests were due this week, I didn't submit one, um, we, we have the ability to use some other funds, we, we don't, we don't want to put the city out on a 10-year timeline, although it's dangerous to always predict that those funds will be there, because the federal government can in fact say, in, in times of war, for instance, they can say, "You know times of war, for instance, they can say, you know what, that's the end of this program. You didn't use it, it's ours. And they did suspend it one time. They reinstated it four or five months later, but we were already in danger of losing our balance at one point. But while we have it this year, I did not submit, because I know that there are limited resources to go around for other departments in this city. So I felt it would not be prudent to put in.
Are there, this is out there, but are there any other options for the use of that money, perhaps leasing of vehicles over a long-term period, any kind of agreements like that, where we could leverage that money now for needs that we might need down the road?
When you say leverage, do you mean use it to help offset other costs in the city before we have to pay for the lease?
Yeah, I'm thinking more along the lines of, you know, you know, you're going to need, and again, I, I don't know, but you know, you're going to need, you know, a couple of cruisers a year, right?
Right.
So, you know, you get into some kind of leasing, leasing agreement that says, you guys are going to provide us a couple of cruisers a year for the next whatever period, here's, here's the payment for that agreement.
Yes.
Is there something that we could do along those lines?
With that's appropriate, yes. You can lease or purchase, whatever it is that you need for the department, as long as it's police only. So if I were to say, need, you know, $100,000 a year for 10 years, I couldn't ask for the million dollars and have the city use 900,000, then 800, then 7, until that money was used. We could not do that.
Right. Okay.
Thank you, chief.
Okay, thank you.
Any other further questions at this time?
Mr. President, I move for adjournment.
Okay. Would anyone like to second that adjournment?
I'll say.
Then we have a second. We'll call both, please.
Councilman Kahoon.
Aye.
Council, Council Vice President Rodrick.
Aye.
Councilman Morato.
Aye.
And Council President Brutto.
Aye. Thank you all. Thank you, chief. Thank you, Mr. Moore. Thank you for coming.